Go ahead and call this Monday, July thirteenth, two thousand and twenty county council meeting to order. First, we'll have the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
I get a second. It's been moved in properly. Second, any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All right, the ayes have it. Now down to the invocation. Councilmember Bell.
Let us pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, let me say thank you for your blessings. We thank you for this day you've given us, and we thank you for all that you do for us each and every day. We pray that you give us wisdom and understanding that we might be able to take care of the business of this county, God. You have been so good to us, and we just want to thank you. Lord, we pray for this nation. We pray for the citizen's safety as we go through this pandemic, God. We just pray that you keep us safe. Father, we ask that you might look over this county and its administration and all the and all our citizens, God, that we might do what is best for them as we try to work throughout this situation that we in. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ms. Bell. Now down to our approval of regular meeting minutes dated June twenty-second, two thousand and twenty. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved improperly. Second, any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, the ayes have it. Now down to public presentations. We have one, a posthumous proclamation in remembrance of Mr. Taft Henry. If it's okay with everyone, I'll summarize from the proclamation from reading. State of South Carolina, County of Fairfield, in remembrance of Mr. Taft Henry. Whereas Master Sergeant retired Taft Henry departed this life on June twenty-sixth of two thousand and twenty. Mr. Henry was the last surviving Buffalo soldier from South Carolina. And whereas Mr. Henry was married to the former Evelyn Olmer of Wentzboro for over sixty-eight years and always referred to her as the love of his life. Together, Mr. and Mrs. Henry raised two children, Mevelin Gaither and Janet Davenport. I think I said that right. And were grandparents to five grandchildren and four great-grandchildren. Mr. Henry served his community as the vice chairman of the Fairfield Memorial Hospital Board, chairman of the Fairfield County Election Commission's, board member of the Fairfield County Department of Social Services, club master of the Boy Scouts of America for Calvary Presbyterian Church, and past volunteer at McCorliss Elementary School in Blair. He was presented the Friend of Education Award by the South Carolina Board Association for his outstanding volunteer work at McCorliss Elementary School. Skip down a little bit. Mr. Henry entered the military on June thirtieth, nineteen forty-six, and served until September thirtieth, nineteen sixty-eight. He received his basic training at Fort Utes, Virginia. If I missed, if I said that wrong, take it for love. And served in World War II. Mr. Henry served as an actual Buffalo soldier on the Fourth Infantry Regiment and was one of the few remaining living Buffalo soldiers in the nation. He took advantage of every opportunity to advance his career in the military by completing basic and advanced military leadership courses. He received many commendations, and Mr. Henry retired from the Army in nineteen sixty-eight after serving his country for twenty-two years. Now therefore be it resolved that the people of Fairfield County are deeply saddened by the death of Mr. Henry and proclaim that the community is richer for him having lived and worked within it. Mr. Henry's life can be best exemplified in First Corinthians fifteen, chapter fifteen, fifty-four through the fifty-eighth verse. He loved God, loved his family, and loved, and he served his community and his country. The people also proclaim their admiration and respect for his accomplishments and the selflessness manner in which he supported the community. On this day, Mr. Henry is honored as an example of citizenship and service at its very finest. And witness thereto, I have hereunto set my hand and seal this thirteenth day of July, Chairman Robinson. Ms. Davis, I do thank the daughter of Mr. Henry. Mr. Gilbert wanted to say something first? Okay.
Yes, I do. I've received a letter from Ms. Janet Henry in reference to the family. But first, I want to say, Mr. Henry, I remember a man with a big smile on his face every time I saw him or met him. He was a man with many accomplishments in life, but I never heard him brag or boast about any of them. He was someone I really looked up to. He always had an encouraging word or compliment for you when he spoke to you. He would be truly missed. He was a rare person. Meaning he always, I mean always, stood for what was right in a non-controversial way. Rest in peace, Mr. Henry. Now I'll read the thank you note from the family. It says, Dear Fairfield County Council, we regret to be unable to attend the Fairfield County meeting tonight to receive the resolution for Master Sergeant retired Taft Henry due to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. However, we want to express our sincere gratitude to you for restoring him with this honor. Thank you for acknowledging the achievements in the death of our patriot, Master Sergeant retired Taft Henry with a parhamant resolution tonight. He was a humble servant who did not brag about his accomplishments or his unique place in history. He lets his work speak for him. Whether he walked with those long legs, strived in his community, in his church, up and down Congress Street in Wentzboro, or wherever he was, he would have never, you would have never known that he was a walking history book. We felt that he served his church, his family, his country, his community with dignity and honor. As one of the last few living actual Buffalo soldiers in the nation, we loved him and we were honored to be his family. As a Buffalo soldier blockhouse, he fought in a war for which he would never reap the benefits. Our family was blessed to have had him with us for ninety-two years. He left with an indelible imprint on our hearts. Councilman Gilbert, we applaud you for your effort in spearheading the parhamant proclamation for one of your lifelong constituents who fought for the rights of everyone to vote. He believed in being involved in voting and in the election process as was evidenced in his role as chairman of the Fairfield County Election Commission. We love work, he loved working for the people of his county. Again, we thank you for this honor. May you be richly blessed, the family of the late Master Sergeant retired Taft Henry.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. Any other council member like to make a comment or say anything? If not, we'll move on to item six A, which is a public hearing. One, item A, an ordinance enacted pursuant to the Capital Project Sales Tax Act, Title Four, Chapter Ten, Article Three of the Code of Laws of South Carolina, nineteen seventy-six, as amended, providing for the imposition of one, of a one percent sales and use tax and the authorization of general obligations bonds, general obligation bonds upon referendum approval, the form of the ballot to be used in connection therewith and other matters relating thereto. We'll go ahead and open this public hearing up at six oh nine. Ms. Davis, anyone sign to speak?
We have one statement from Mr. Randy Bright from District One. Clearly, the county's plans to upgrade our aging and limited-capacity sewer system is an imperative to improving our citizens' future health and general welfare. As if to highlight Fairfield's needs, Duke University's Kenan Institute for Ethics delivered this message as part of their investing in rural sewage infrastructure for economic growth study in two thousand and eighteen. Building water and wastewater infrastructure in rural and urban communities across the U.S. creates jobs, stimulates investment from the private sector, and increases a community's tax base. For each dollar spent building water or wastewater infrastructure, about fifteen dollars is created in private investment and fourteen dollars added to the local property tax base. Supplying rural areas with wastewater infrastructure has the potential to increase economic activity in a number of ways, including reducing outmigration of rural residents, increasing agricultural output, and attracting industry to generate jobs which would attract residents. Outmigration, which could partly be driven by a lack of wastewater services, further exacerbates the problem of a lack of wastewater infrastructure because it decreases the tax base on which a municipality can draw to provide such services. This creates a paradox for rural communities where residents leave because infrastructure is lacking, in turn decreasing the revenue that a municipality or community has to improve infrastructure. Communities therefore either remain in the same position at best or their circumstances worsen because they cannot generate enough revenue to maintain their wastewater infrastructure. Rural communities are thus trapped in a catch-22. Second, employers and manufacturers that locate their businesses in urban areas may be encouraged to expand their operations into rural areas if they have the wastewater infrastructure that they need. Indeed, investing in our sewer infrastructure is not just a win-win for all, it's an imperative for the county.
Thank you. Ms. Davis, has no one else sent any statement? We'll go ahead and close this public hearing at six twelve. Now down to item seven, ordinances, resolutions, and orders.
Any kind of discussion on the public here?
No, you wanted to discuss it?
Well, I just wanted to ask a question.
Being that it was on item A, I was gonna have a discussion then, if that's okay. We'll go that way because I've got C.D. to discuss also.
Okay.
All right. Item A, second reading ordinance number seven fifty, an ordinance enacted pursuant to the Capital Project Sales Tax Act, Title Four, Chapter Ten, Article Three of the Code of Laws of South Carolina, nineteen seventy-six, as amended, providing for the imposition of a one percent sales and use tax and the authorization of general obligation bonds upon referendum approval, the form of the ballot to be used in connection therewith and other related matters thereto. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved improperly. Second, at this time for discussion, I go ahead and turn the floor over to Mr. C.D. Rhodes to kind of open the floor for us, if that's okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Excellent. So thank you all once again, and as always, for having me here, not here, I guess physically, but in your meeting to discuss these matters with you. Let me just very, very briefly give you a little bit of an update. So back in March, you created the Capital Project Sales Tax Commission. The commission's job, and it really its sole job under the act, is to consider the various capital needs in the county and to formulate, well, first of all, to come up with a list of capital projects that should be funded using the proceeds of this tax, this one percent sales and use tax. And then primarily using that list, but also including some other considerations, to formulate the ballot question that will go on the general election ballot this coming November. So they completed their work back in June, on June the eleventh, and they adopted a resolution that you should have included in your packet today. And that resolution made a number of findings, and most importantly, it approved the form of the ballot question. So I think quickly, I'm gonna run through this ordinance because I think it's laid out in such a way that we can touch on all of the really most important matters in pretty quick succession, and then certainly available to answer any questions that you might have. So first and foremost, this is a one percent sales and use tax. It is imposed on most of the same items that the normal sales tax, the normal South Carolina sales tax is imposed upon. There are a few minor differences, and we discussed some of those back in March. And I believe I'd sent along some follow-up information. They talked about some of the differences in the items that this tax is imposed on. The term of the tax is to be eight years. If it's approved at the referendum, it'll go into effect on May first of two thousand and twenty-one. And unless it is extended by a subsequent referendum, it'll expire on April the thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-nine. When we get down to the ballot question itself, we'll talk about the purposes of the ballot in a little more detail. But as you know, the primary purpose of this tax is to fund the construction of a wastewater treatment plant. And then we have, in addition to that, the possibility that it may fund sewer lines and other kind of related sewer infrastructure. There are some skipping down to section two point oh four of your ordinance. The commission is authorized by the act to impose certain conditions on the expenditure of the capital project sales tax funds. And in this case, although they are conditions, the paragraph that you see excerpted there is really intended to give you a little bit of flexibility down the road. One important consideration here is, you know, this act is really intended to allow you, it's a long-term planning tool at the end of the day. It is to allow you to fund capital projects over an eight-year time period. And certainly, if you had asked us back in January whether we would be having this meeting virtually today, we would have said absolutely, there's no way that's gonna happen. It's very difficult to peer into the future and see what's gonna happen, whether it's a matter of months, and certainly if it's a matter of three or four or five years. And so the conditions that are imposed by the commission in this case essentially give you some flexibility to declare a project to be impossible. So for instance, if, I guess, one really great reason that this project, the funding of the wastewater treatment plant might be impossible is, you know, a large manufacturer signs on to the mega site tomorrow, and all of a sudden, the forty million dollars that is needed to fund this whole project is made available by the state. Well, in that case, you certainly aren't going to waste eleven and a half million dollars on the cost of the plant. And so there needs to be a ripcord, so to speak, that allows you in some very certain, in very specific circumstances, to declare the use of the proceeds for that project to be impossible and to, for instance, move down the list to the next project and spend the money on other sewer infrastructure. So there's a little bit of flexibility built into this process. Not an enormous amount because the statute doesn't give us an enormous amount of flexibility, but there is some. So once you have the ballot question from the commission, you essentially have to take it as they deliver it to you. The one exception to that is you can add, and it is your responsibility if it is to be done, to add in an authorization to issue bonds that will be repaid from these capital project sales tax revenues. I would say of the other counties that engage in this process, maybe about half authorize the use of bonds. It really depends on the types of projects that are gonna be funded from the tax. If you're gonna fund a number of small projects over the eight-year term, it really may not be necessary to issue bonds. But in this case, it really is essential to the use of these funds for the purposes of building the plant. And so in this case, the ballot question will include an authorization to issue bonds up to the amount of nine million, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. These are technically general obligation bonds. And so because they are authorized through the referendum, they don't count against your debt limit, and they are sized so that you never actually have to levy taxes to pay them. They are sized so that they are repaid exclusively from the sales tax revenues. But it is important to recognize that there's no authorization for the county to issue bonds against sales taxes. And so these are technically general obligation bonds, although you don't expect to ever have to issue taxes to pay them back. So moving on down to the ballot question itself. You see, there are two items on there. The first one is the wastewater treatment plant project. The second is the sewer lines and infrastructure project. They both include anticipated proceeds of the tax that will go toward. Obviously, your ordinance, the commission's resolution contemplated that the eleven and a half million dollars of proceeds of the tax are not gonna come anywhere close to funding the entirety of the cost of the plant. And you notice that the total, the total cost of the expenditures is higher than the amount that we expect to bring in the door. If you have extra revenues after you have completed all the projects, then it's really then kind of falls to county council to determine how those monies are spent. And in this particular case, given the importance of this project, the commission decided that they wanted to set those numbers higher, essentially to serve as assurance that unless the sales tax receipts just go through the roof, that, you know, these revenues are going to be spent on sewer infrastructure. See, we've added the bond authorization in there, and then the last portion of the ballot is just those conditions that are in your ordinance that are recited back in your ordinance. That's where they come from, is the second part of the ballot question. So you were giving second reading tonight, assuming that you give second reading, you'll consider it for third reading at your next meeting. The next step in the process is to send this along, send your ordinance and the ballot question along to the election commission, where they will then take the steps necessary to put it on the November two thousand and twenty ballot. So with that in mind, I am happy to answer any questions that you may have about this, about the referendum process, anything else on this subject.
Think Mr. Paulie had a question?
Well, I don't think my question was for him. I think it was more for administration that with this public hearing, was it properly notified in the paper? And proper notification sent out for the public hearing?
It was.
Yes.
Yes. I saw it.
Does any council member has any questions in reference to?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Bell?
Is he back on?
Yes, sir.
Okay, one of the questions I have is, you talked about if the project became, if council declared it impossible, and you say going down the line to other projects. The only projects I see is the wastewater treatment project and the sewer lines. Am I correct?
So the way that it would work, if you completed, if the, let's say there was other funding available for the wastewater treatment plant, and you completed all of the sewer infrastructure projects that needed to be done, at that point, you would have presumably a pretty large bucket of money that would need to be spent in some other means. In that event, what the act provides is that you would have to then go back to the voters. Well, there's a two-step process essentially. The act says if the tax is reimposed, then, which means you would have another referendum, just like this process where you have another list of projects, then any money, any proceeds from the first tax is supposed to be spent on the projects that are approved at the second referendum, which would presumably happen in seven or eight years. If the tax is not reimposed, then it then falls to county council to decide how those proceeds are to be spent. And you could spend them on any project that would have otherwise been authorized under the act, which essentially is any brick-and-mortar project that you can think of. The one kind of technicality there, the rub there, is that you won't actually know whether or not the tax is gonna be reimposed until it essentially approaches the end of its term. So if the tax expires in April of two thousand and twenty-eight, you won't know with certainty that it's not going to be reimposed until you get beyond the deadline for, to place a new tax on the ballot in November of two thousand and twenty-eight. So you can't affirm that it's not going to be reimposed until you get to that deadline, and you can't spend the money any other way. So let me lay out the scenario here because I know this is getting a little complicated. If the, if there was other funds available to fund the wastewater treatment plant, let's say next year, that would be a wonderful problem to have, and the sewer line project was fully funded the year after, you could either have a second referendum in the third year to authorize all new projects, or you could sit on that money until the end of the term, until sometime in two thousand and twenty-eight, and then you could make the decision yourself, just without any other authorization, to spend the money in other means. I will freely admit that is a convoluted process. It is unfortunately what the act and the Supreme Court require of us.
Okay, again, let me ask this question again, for my clarity. If we was, if the county was to get some money, let's say we come into like forty million dollars. Okay, all right, okay, so we don't, so we go ahead and decide to build the wastewater treatment plant from that forty million. So this fourteen million dollars that we collect, it would be council decision on how to spend that money?
If you waited until the end of the term of the tax, sometime in two thousand and twenty-eight, to decide how to spend it. I think in most cases, this is not a common occurrence, as you can imagine. You know, it is not, it's not typical to have millions and millions of extra dollars from these taxes sitting around waiting for a, an approved use. What would more than likely happen, you probably want to spend that money a little quicker than that. And so you very well may go through this process again and have another referendum with additional projects. But it would be your choice which of those two routes you wanted to take.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Douglas.
You're talking about floating borrowing money on bonds. Shouldn't we have the one-set sales tax and agree to it and then collect money and see what money that is? We don't need to be borrowing money to be paid back by the one-set sales tax and not get enough money to do it. We'd have to go up on taxes to pay it back if the one-set sales tax doesn't take care of the payment.
So you are absolutely, you're a hundred percent correct. But you'll notice the bond authorization is a good bit less than the anticipated tax collections. I will say as an initial matter, the anticipated tax collections are pretty conservative. They are based upon your sales tax collections in two thousand and eighteen, and they do not escalate over their eight-year term. So they assume that there will be no growth in sales taxes over an eight-year term. They are conservative numbers to start with. The amount of the bonds that are authorized here, nine million, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, is obviously it's less than the eleven and a half million you expect to bring in the door because you would have to pay interest with that eleven and a half million. So that accounts for a portion of the reduction. But also included in that is an assumption that you would collect those taxes for at least a full year before you actually went out and borrowed the money. And so you would have, at the very least, a year's worth of tax collections to show, to prove to yourselves and the public and everyone else, and banks, honestly, to prove that those collections were gonna come in. to come in as expected. If, uh, if we get a year into this thing, and for instance, the, the COVID situation hasn't improved, um, then it may make lots of sense for you to wait until there's, until you're two years out, and you have two years of tax collections so that you increase your, your level of certainty. The good thing is, the good news is that the, as you wait, uh, those taxes keep coming in, and they keep getting deposited into your bank. And so the amount of the bonds that you have to borrow, or that you, you may want to borrow, just keeps going down and down and down, uh, and you have cash on hand that you can use for, uh, the plant whenever the, the time is right to build it. So, uh, I guess, to answer your question, the numbers are already very conservative. They assume that we're going to wait a period of time before we issue the bonds to make sure that the tax collections are coming in, and the longer you wait, the, uh, the lower the amount of the bonds that you ultimately have to issue. Uh, certainly, the, the intent here, uh, is that you would never have to levy taxes in order to pay for them. And, and we've done a lot to make sure that that's the case.
Thank you. I have some question.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I got one more question.
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Bill, go ahead.
Um, it, it's just a, why, why are we calling it one percent sales and use tax? One percent?
One.
That's what the act authorizes. Uh, it, it authorizes you to impose an additional one percent. There are other sales tax authorizations out there that lets you, uh, do fractions of one percent. Uh, but in this particular case, for this particular tax, the statute requires that it be a one percent sales tax.
Good, Mr. Bill. Any other council member has any questions? If not, I'm just like, I'm sorry, go ahead, Vice Chair Goines, go ahead.
Yes, thank you so much, and I want to thank Mr. Rhodes so very much for the explanation, for the hard work, and each and every one of you for what you're doing, because this is detrimental to Fairfield County. Also, just wanted to kind of, uh, put it out there, we shouldn't even be considering, uh, bonds at this point. We first got to get, we are almost like trying to get the, the cart before the horse. Uh, we need to get things in place, get this on ballot, get it approved by the citizens, get an understanding to the citizens of the value of this one percent sales tax, and what they're going to reap long-term, the long-term benefits for that. And yes, they focus on the project at hand, because if we do this, and we do it right, and we're successful with it by the grace of God, once the water treatment plant is in place, the lines are in place, we begin to get an influx of businesses and people, we won't have to worry about bonds, and won't have to worry about levying taxes or any of that. We will be increased according to what we already have. We'll just be growing what we are already investing in. So I want to thank you so much, and I wish and pray that all, please push this project. It is necessary, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Vice Chair Goines. Any other council member like to be recognized, uh, discussion? If not, I've just got a question for the ministry. I'm just curious as to, I know you've said this before, but what is our capacity now? Where are we at? And what do we look like? As I know, 2019 was a pretty good year for us, so.
It was a good year. Um, you know, it depends on where you're located at in the county, but for the most part, the properties that we have, that we have on the market for development, we have roughly thirty-two thousand gallons left. We have had companies looking at us in recent months that would wipe that out, which would essentially mean the mega site, the Commerce Center, even what's left of Walter Brown, we would really have no capacity left. Uh, we would be essentially out of business, uh, as far as it goes with economic development. The town, uh, the Winsborough, they do have additional capacity that's available here in town. But again, the problem is the lines that go out into the county, uh, the one that serves, um, the Commerce Center, it's essentially undersized. And that's one of the things we looked at the option there. Uh, if we didn't get the sewer plant, what would it cost to do a line out to? And that line alone was over eight million dollars, just to access the existing capacities in the plant. But the, with the line that we have, uh, and the services available at the Commerce Center, thirty-two thousand's roughly what we have left.
I keep hearing moratorium state. Could you kind of break that down for?
What happens is, once you get to a certain point, as far as, um, capacity with sewer, DHEC does step in, they put you in a moratorium situation, which means basically you can issue no more building permits, no, you can't issue any more connections to, um, the sewer plant. Uh, at that point, once they put you in a moratorium, they require that you have plans in place to start, um, construction of new capacity.
Same thing they did at Gray Falls.
Right. They do it a, a, a number of towns. Where our previous work, we got in that situation at one point, where we had, we were in a moratorium, we expanded our existing plant, uh, where we could, and then we eventually had to build a new one. But you do get in a position where you can't accept any more growth, and DHEC will shut you down.
You know, the council member has any questions, or?
I got one. So on the, on the ballot in November, it would be, I guess, two questions. One, which is in favor of the capital project sales tax, and two, the favor of issuing bonds if necessary, correct?
They're actually combined into one question, uh, which is required by the, the, the act. Uh, and so it is a, a, it's a two-part question, so to speak, but it is the, it is a single question. You know, shall a tax be issued to fund, uh, these particular projects? And, um, may the county be authorized to issue bonds up to the amount of nine million, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to defray the cost of these projects, uh, which would be repaid through the, the collections of the tax. But it is a, it is a single question that folks will vote on, which is, once again, the requirement. Um, if you are to, if you are to authorize the use of these proceeds to pay back bonds, the act requires that the county council add the bond authorization to the, uh, the, the single ballot question.
So if you weren't in favor of the bonds, but if you were in favor of the sales tax, and you voted no, that does away with the sales tax also, correct?
That's correct. And I will tell you that in a lot of counties where, uh, where they are funding, you know, a huge list of projects, that's a key consideration for leaving off that bond authorization. Uh, because they, generally speaking, um, you know, by the time you've got a couple of years of revenue under your belt, and you'd be ready to issue, and you've planned all these projects, you've, you know, taken out all the permits, you've done all the stuff you need to do, oftentimes, even if you included a bond authorization, you don't need it, because you can just fund all these projects on a pay-as-you-go basis. I'll tell you that in this case, we don't really have that option, unfortunately. If we get to year three, and we're, and, and all of a sudden, everything has come together, or hopefully earlier than that, year two, and everything has come together, uh, to build the wastewater treatment plant, we need all that money now. We don't have the luxury of waiting for eight years and funding stuff on a pay-as-you-go basis over an eight-year term. And so in this particular case, with, and this is a very, uh, a fairly unique circumstance. But in this circumstance, I think the, the bond authorization is, is elemental to being able to use these proceeds in the way that you would want to.
That's more or less borrowing from yourself.
That's, that's right. What, what borrowing is always intended to do.
Yes, thank you so much for explaining that a little more detail. Now, I understand. Thank you so much. Um, also, uh, Mr. Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Hello?
Yes, ma'am.
Would like to ask also if it is possible that we can get a copy of that, um, referendum book that, uh, we can start circulating, what's going to actually be on ballot, so we can get it maybe out to the citizens, get it in the paper, so we can get, and people have a clear understanding of what it's about. And, uh, for Mr. Uh, Councilman Paul just said, uh, if you vote for one, then you're almost like denying the other, and you're saying no when you're going to say yes, and it can be kind of confusing. So if we can get it out where it's clear, Rhodes just explained, for us, in this case, both are necessary. That they, they kind of go together. They almost have to go together. So if we can get that information out, I think it would help us a lot.
Yes, ma'am. Any other council member has any comment on the discussion?
Okay, um, now, when you, when you mentioned putting it out there, um, it's, it's got to be, you got to just do it for information purposes, am I correct?
No, sir.
Even if you do that.
From, from, from what I gather, council members can champion for this.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Yes.
Can I speak, can I speak quickly to that point? That's a, that's a good point. So, um, and I think that's, um, an important point to make here, is, you know, we are putting a, uh, a question on the ballot, and so we are essentially implicating, uh, the Ethics Act. And the Ethics Act, uh, contains two really important provisions that we have to keep in mind. One prohibits the use of, um, of public officers and, or prohibits public officers and employees from using, um, government personnel, equipment, materials, other public resources, uh, to influence the outcome of an election or in an election campaign.
Right.
And then there's another provision that prohibits the use of public funds and public property. Essentially, when read together, these provisions prohibit the use of public resources to advocate for the result, uh, in an election, including a, a ballot question like this one. Uh, and of course, you, there's lots of, of very simple examples out there of things that you can't do. So for instance, you can't, uh, print up a flyer that talks about how wonderful this wastewater treatment plant's going to be, and how essential it is for Fairfield County, all the stuff that we've been talking about for a year now. Uh, you can't put that on a flyer and, and then print it out on paper that was purchased with county funds, on a printer that was purchased with county funds. Uh, you can't email it around on, using an email account, um, that is hosted using county funds. You can't do anything that uses public resources to advocate for a result. Now, I think, um, someone made the point, you can certainly use public funds to educate the public on the ballot question. So the, kind of the, the most basic thing that lots of folks do is they will print out the ballot and circulate it to people, so that they start asking questions, and they, and they ask a lot of the questions that you're asking today about the bonds and about the necessity of all of this. Uh, and as you, uh, go through the process of deciding what information to put out there, um, I and certainly Tommy, uh, will both be available to help you think through what you can and cannot do. We want to make sure that you don't cross any lines. Now, Mr. Chairman, to your point, uh, there has been, over the years, really until last couple of years, uh, a lot of folks who were in my position, who were kind of making these judgment calls for their clients, would tell you, and I, and I said this many, many times, that council members could say whatever they wanted, uh, in support of or in opposition to a, an election, to a ballot question, in whatever, uh, in whatever venue they wanted to say it in, including a council meeting. Um, I felt like, and still feel like, to be honest with you, that it's a free speech issue. Uh, you should have the ability to speak up in a council meeting, or anywhere else for that matter, and tell the voters how you feel about, uh, ballot questions, about a ballot question like this one. Uh, importantly, uh, in 2018, in May of 2018, the South Carolina Ethics Commission handed down an opinion, which they do periodically. And the question was, it was directly on point, may council members in a public meeting speak out in favor of, uh, a, the, the result in a bond referendum? In that case, it was a bond referendum. The answer was, no, they cannot. That is, essentially, you are using the auspices of a public meeting, which is held, which is held in a public building, which is paid for with public funds. You are using public funds in that case to advocate for the result in an election. Uh, I don't agree with that opinion. I think it's bunk, to be quite honest with you. But, uh, but they didn't ask me. Uh, and the opinion is out there, for better or for worse. And so what I would tell you is, as council members, you certainly, when you're out in public, you can say anything you want, whenever you want. You can go to Rotary meetings, you can speak to, um, the congregations of your churches, uh, you can get out there, and you, I certainly hope you will, get out there and promote this thing, because that's how these referendums get passed. What you can't do is, after your third reading, so after your July twenty-second meeting, I believe, um, that is essentially where you draw the line. And everything that's been said tonight is perfectly fine. No one has, has stepped across any line, because there is no line at this point. But once you have taken the final action to place this ballot question on the ballot, at that point in time, uh, you do have to at least have, use a little bit of caution and not speak in, uh, in a, uh, either in advocacy for or in opposition against this referendum in a public me, in a, in a council meeting. Um, so that's just something to keep in mind. I, I, I don't necessarily agree with it, but it's certainly out there.
Okay.
Okay, if I may, um, my, my thought was not so much as putting, uh, in, this want the flyer with the actual statement that will be on ballot, and that's it. Not giving instructions, not giving suggestions, just so people will be familiar with it when they see it again on ballot. That's really what it wants to circulate. Now, if they ask questions about it, then where do we stand at that point?
So if, if someone-
They ask a clarification. Yeah, just, just want to circulate a copy of, can we do that? Just actually circulate a copy of the question that's going to be on the ballot, without other information attached to it.
You could certainly do that. That is absolutely A-OK. Specifically says that you can, um, you can respond to, to news media and citizen questions. So if someone, if someone calls up and gets on the phone with Jason and says, you know, why do y'all need all this money? Uh, Jason certainly can tell them why the county needs the money. Uh, but when you're out there, kind of, when you're putting yourself out there, you do have to be a little bit careful. But what you're talking about doing is completely fine.
Okay.
I think, uh, each council member should have gotten a, I guess, a copy of the, uh, ballot question, uh, in their packet. I think everybody should have, so. If not, just, I got to get with, uh, Ms. Davis. So, you know, the council member has any questions, concerns, comments, before we take a vote? If not, um, all those in favor of the second reading of ordinance number seven fifty signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
That's five to two, five in favor.
Nay, sir.
All right, thank you. Thank you, CD, for that.
Exactly.
All right, um, now down to item B, first reading by title only, just to give a disclaimer for everyone, uh, first readings, there is no discussion. Uh, we can't change that, so just keep that in mind. Um, item B, first reading by title only, ordinance number seven five one, and ordinance approving the agreement to share costs, and a first supplement there to by and between Fairfield County and the joint water and sewer system and the town of Winsborough, and other matters related thereto. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Second.
Backing.
Spin moved and properly second. As I stated before, there is no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Nay.
Mr. Trap, nay. All right, the ayes have it. Now down to item C, which is first reading by title only, ordinance number seven five two. Once again, there will be no discussion. An ordinance to amend the Fairfield County Land Management Ordinance Number five nine nine, to provide for the zoning reclassification from I-1 Industrial District to B-2 General Business District of six acres owned by Healthcare U.S., uh, company LTD, portion of tax map number one six four dash zero zero dash zero zero dash zero zero two dash zero zero zero. This property is located at State Highway two sixty-nine, Winsborough, South Carolina, two nine one eight zero. Do I have a motion? at State Highway 269, Winsborough, South Carolina 29180. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Second.
It's been moved improperly second. Uh, once again, there is no discussion on first readings. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, first of all, aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Now down to item D, which is a resolution. Resolution number 2020-09, authorizing the execution and delivery of a partial assignment and assumption agreement among Fairfield, among Fairfield County, Element Real Estate Holdings LLC and Winsborough Real Estate Holdings LLC pertaining to a purchase under a lease agreement between Fairfield County and Element Real Estate Holdings LLC and a special source revenue credit amongst, I'm sorry, agreement between Fairfield County and Element Real Estate Holdings LLC, the execution and delivery of a Second Amendment to Performance Agreement among Fairfield County, the South Carolina Coordinating Council for Economic Development and Element Television Company LLC, and such other documents as may be necessary to effect the intent of this ordinance and other matters related thereto. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Second.
It's been moved, it's been moved improperly second. Uh, discussion, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Taylor. Give us a-
He has a little background on this.
Background. I know he's been working on this a while, so.
We, this has been an ongoing, uh, situation since 2013, when Element first located, uh, here in Fairfield County and in Winsborough. Uh, in 2013, Element was, uh, brought here under an incentive agreement. Uh, initially, that incentive agreement had the county holding, owning the building that they're located in, which we still, uh, own. Element is looking to, and we've modified that, I think, in 2018 also. But again, we're looking to, uh, encourage them to continue to invest here. They do want to invest another $1.5 million in the facility here in Winsborough. And, uh, in order to do that, they do finally need the building. And this was always the intent, is for the building to eventually be transferred from the county's, uh, ownership, us holding it, to them owning it. And, uh, in order for them to make this a $1.5 million investment, I think they need to have the building under their ownership. Uh, and essentially, that's what we're looking to do, is move, uh, toward, uh, transferring the building from them to us. Mr. Morgan, is that, um, and I'll let you add to that.
And I think the reason being too, they want to do another TV, another line.
That, that's something, again, we've been very closely working with Department of Commerce and Element on this, and we have been trying to encourage them to add additional products and or lines, uh, to what they're doing out there. And again, with this $1.5 million investment that they're hoping to make, uh, we, we hope to achieve that.
Um, question though, will that change the tax base for, for them?
I'll let the, uh, our attorney address that. But again-
Mr. Bill, what ended up happening is that property will still be under a fee and new tax agreement and special source revenue credit agreement.
Okay.
And what this, what the documents are doing, as Mr. Taylor said, um, Element would like to, again, the intent, intent has always been, it was a lease, and obviously they would, uh, get the building at a certain point in time. They've met and continue to meet, um, uh, certain economic development requirements and investment requirements, jobs requirements. What we're doing with this is also not just allowing for the conveyance of the property to go forward, but they, uh, Element has decided to establish the Winsborough Real Estate Holdings LLC, which was not originally part of the process. It's still an Element-owned entity, but it's just a different holding company that Element intends to have. The real estate, the real property owns certain portions, and then they own the machinery, which is taxed at a different rate. So that's the, again, basically the two prongs of what this document and what these agreements are for.
Yes, sir.
Taylor, as you stated earlier, town of Winsborough does have the capacity of water for this.
Again, in the town, they have a higher capacity. They have over 100,000 gallons available in town. Just once you get out of town, the lines unfortunately were undersized, and that's when you have problems. But again, there is water in the town of Winsborough to support these kind of activities.
Okay. Any further discussion from council? If no further discussion, I'll entertain a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. First of all, aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Now down to Resolution E, Resolution 2020-10, a resolution by Fairfield County Council encouraging individuals to wear face coverings in certain circumstances and matters related thereto. Do I have a motion?
No move, Mr. Chair.
Don't move.
It's been moved, been moved improperly second. Uh, for discussion, uh, Mr. Taylor, one?
Yes. Obviously, I think everyone's aware that the COVID numbers continue to rise in South Carolina. I think Arizona, Florida, South Carolina are now the hotspots in the country, uh, for increased cases in coronavirus. Uh, our cases, we spiked Saturday, having 25 new cases. Uh, currently, we're at 377 in, in cases. Uh, the town of Winsborough has passed, passed a mandatory mask ordinance. Uh, we would like to support that. Um, our attorney, and I will let, uh, Mr. Morgan comment on this, has said that, uh, he doesn't know that we can pass the same type of ordinance that the town of Winsborough has passed, making it mandatory. But nevertheless, this is a resolution highly encouraging our citizens in, in light of increased cases, increased numbers that South Carolina and Fairfield County are experiencing to follow suit with what Winsborough is doing, to support them and encourage all those outside of the town of Winsborough to also wear masks. Uh, Mr. Morgan, if you would comment on the differences between the county and the town.
Uh, yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of council, what you have before you is a resolution that encourages, um, the, the wearing of face coverings as opposed to an ordinance, as Mr. Taylor was saying, mandating that. Um, the reasons being, and we have researched this, there are obviously various entities across the state that are handling this, this issue differently. So for example, you have a Spartanburg County that has a similar ordinance encouraging the use, and you have a neighboring county such as Richland that has a, an ordinance mandating the use. If you go back and you look at the Attorney General's opinion that was given on March 29th, the earlier this year, that talked about the, uh, extraordinary powers and the differentiation under Home Rule Act, that the governor has certain powers that are enumerated and the counties and the cities do as well. Going forward, since then, the Attorney General has given a statement, um, on June 24th. Now, it's not the same as an opinion, but it was a statement that, that specifically said that the cities or municipality which act under Title V of the South Carolina laws can pass these types of ordinances, but did not say that counties could. So there is a question about whether the counties can actually do that. And again, uh, for example, I know Richland has passed an ordinance, and they specifically cite two, two code sections, four dash nine dash 25, which basically talks about the general powers of a county, and then four dash nine dash 130, which talks about the emergency powers. This is the provision that this council has previously used to declare the emergency ordinance, allowing for digital attendance, um, et cetera. But if you, if you look, the question then becomes, there's, there's multiple questions that arise. First and foremost, if you look at it from, uh, uh, an ability to be applied to everyone, if you look at the Richland ordinance, it treats certain establishments and certain businesses in a different fashion, given the fact that this is a face covering and it would be something that basically impacts a person's individually, their, their, their physical nature, that would probably lead a court to give a strict scrutiny to those type of ordinances, which means that they would have to be applied neutrally or facially. So for example, an ordinance that says one class or one certain type of business has different restrictions than others, would, in, in my opinion, likely, you could be constitutionally challenged. Secondly, you have to look at some of the, uh, issues as it relates to the exceptions to the rule, because we all know that, for example, the Richland ordinance has certain exceptions, one of them being, for example, children, uh, others being health conditions. Then you get into a situation wherein whether or not giving that information about why I do have an underlying health condition, is that violative of HIPAA rules, uh, protected health information, that's a situation that arises. And then finally, again, there's, there's a lot that goes on here. But the big thing would be the enforcement mechanism, given that other counties are using this as a civil, not criminal fine, that makes a huge distinction. First and foremost, when it comes to criminal, there are lots of due process protections that have to come into play, depending upon whether or not there is either a fine or whether or not there's, uh, uh, jail time associated with it. There's an incarceration period. You have some Alabama versus Shelton, which is a case that talks about the right to due process, the right to legal counsel, et cetera. If you look at it from a civil standpoint, then the enforcement from the county is, is problematic as well. First and foremost, the, the county can't direct, for example, law enforcement to enforce a civil fine. Um, again, because the sheriff is being a constitutionally elected officer, and his deputies serve at a pleasure and discretion, the county couldn't basically force off the enforcement onto a law enforcement, not only just because of that, but because of their class one license. They can't do that. If you look at it, if, if it's a civil fine, then you have the concerns about who is going to enforce it on behalf of the county. Um, code enforcement, if they are class three certified, the Criminal Justice Academy says that they are limited to the statutory to define what they can do. That would be animal control and litter. So that would then leave you, and for example, if you look towards the city of Columbia, for example, um, they're using the meter maids, for lack of a better term. Um, and I don't think the county has any of those, um, that do enforce parking tickets or anything like that. So the county could find itself within inability to enforce it, because you also have the, what's known as the, if someone were to write a ticket, what would be the charging document? What would that ticket actually look like? You couldn't write it on what's known as a blue book or a uniform traffic ticket. Would have to be a special, uh, document that the county doesn't have in its possession at this time. Um, then you could also look at, you know, with someone technically coming up to you and saying, okay, you're not wearing a, a mask, I'm gonna have to write you a civil fine. Then the enforcement of, well, whether or not that person has to show identification, because the Supreme Court, there's lots of cases that talk about stop and frisk, um, which basically prevents law enforcement from coming up and, and talking to people and requiring for them to show their ID. So that is also a concern. And then finally, if there is a fine and the enforcement payment of it, we'd have to work through some of the issues as it relates to budgetary, how that's going to be accounted for in the budget, um, non-payment, so on and so forth. So when, looking at it as a whole, both whether or not it can be done, and if it can, and what means and methods, um, we've researched it pretty in depth, and we are of the office of the opinion that a, a countywide ordinance requiring it cannot be done. And hence, uh, we've, uh, made the determination and provided for, uh, council this evening a resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Any questions?
Mr. Morgan?
Yes, sir.
Um, you actually didn't, uh, really answer the question on here. This, this is just asking the people in Fairfield County to wear a face mask.
That is correct.
Just asking them. That's, we had nothing to do with whether it's lawful or not. Um, if it doesn't go any further than this body here, it's no use to even talk about it. If it's not advertised that we need people to wear the mask, it's, you know, we're just wasting our time.
Well, you got a point, Mr. Douglas. I was gonna ask, administration, is it possible to maybe get some signage out to the businesses and especially unincorporated areas of the county?
Um, we do have some signage, but we can expand what we put out without question. And I do agree, uh, much of this, if we can't enforce, it is somewhat symbolic.
Does the county have a Facebook?
We do have a Facebook page. Yes, we can put it out on the Facebook page. And again, it's, um, this is something, public safety is one of the first things, our first, uh, uh, things that the county or any public body should be, uh, involved in, 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 in pursuing.
Yeah, I would agree with Mr. Douglas. Um, you know, this is advertised every day on the news. You see it somewhere. And if, if individuals in the county are not encouraged by now to wear face coverings, um, I don't know what else to say.
Main thing is, we can do our part as, as, uh, district managers or, or elected officials to promote safety. That's the way I look at it. Any other discussion? Councils?
And, and I, on that, I do agree, and it says, we're in there says encouraging. And sometimes it takes a little bit of encouragement for somebody else to say to a person to do something, and they will, or they won't respond to another person. And we have to keep encouraging, this virus is serious. And I have several family members that have been affected by it. Young and older ones have underlying this, uh, ailment. So I know not to take it for granted, not to throw it to the side. It's not a cold. It also has, uh, after effects. Even when you recover, it has a tendency to have sometimes short-term and long-term after effects. So yes, we have to keep encouraging people. Whether they listen or not, we have to do our part.
Any other discussion from council members? If not, all those in favor of Resolution Number 2020-10 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Um, now down to item eight, Boarding Commission Minutes. Uh, each council member should have received the packet from, uh, Disabilities and Special Needs, received this information. Item nine, uh, Boarding Commission Appointments, we have none. Old and new business, we have none. Now down to our County Administrator's Report, Mr. Taylor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one item, uh, food distribution update. Uh, we will continue, uh, we are, continue to get su- support to do these food distributions, and we, at this point, will be doing four coming up shortly, and we'll be distributing 800 boxes of food, 200 at each site. Uh, Ms. Johnson has been heading this up for us, and I will let her give you an update on the times and the locations, uh, where we'll be distributing food.
Good evening, council. Um, just to note, this will be, uh, this will be our fifth food distribution this year. Our next one is July 16th, which is this Thursday. It will start promptly at 5:00 P.M. We have four separate locations. Um, this time, McCorley Liston School of Technology in Blair, Fairfield County Airport on Runway Road in Winsborough, Fairfield County Commerce Center, Blue Granite Parkway and Ridgeway, and Miford Fire Station, um, in Great Falls. It again will be fresh fruits and vegetables to the first 200 households. Um, with all of the other food distributions that we've had thus far, it was only one box per car. This particular time, we're doing two boxes per car, but one per household. So two people can receive, um, a box, but they have to live in different households.
How about proof of residency?
Um, yeah, we're looking, uh, we're checking the licenses to make sure they are Fairfield County residents. So they will have to show, um, ID, identification in order to get a box. And we've had four successful, uh, food distributions, and I, I expect nonetheless from this one.
Ms. Johnson, we, I know we've given away a lot of food. Who's paying for this?
Um, the first two, the first three that, uh, food distributions that we had, um, Harvest Hope Food Bank, uh, supplied, um, all the goods. And the fourth one that we had, um, Fairfield Forward, um, paid $5,000 to get 100 boxes.
Okay.
Uh, per site, so we could, uh, give those out. Yeah, we had one, two, three. On June 23rd, we had three sites. And we gave out about, I think, 111 each at those sites. And with this particular one that's happening on July 16th, Sinbrother Brothers, they received a USDA grant to actually, uh, uh, give out food. And so we are not paying for this at all.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. So, um, I will say, I, I contribute, I assisted with the last one. It was people waiting since four o'clock, just, just to get the food, so.
Yes, that was one of the reasons we changed the sites, because we got the complaints about the main roads. People are just stopped. We couldn't get them into locations. And I'm, we're hoping that this will serve as better locations. And I also want to take the time to thank all of our volunteers. Um, the ones that have stuck with us and the new ones through all of these distributions, um, they've been very helpful and they're always eager, um, to volunteer and help in any way possible.
Still nothing from the food bank. Um, still nothing from the food bank. And that was it. Uh, thank y'all. Now down to our, uh, there's no cloak to council's report. Now down to our county council time. Any council member like to be recognized?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Douglas.
Um, y'all know, because y'all been with me for the last nearly four years, during the pollen part of the year, my sinus- During the pollen part of the year, my sinuses and pollen makes me sneeze and cough a lot, and I always brought me a towel with me when it came to the meetings, so everybody wouldn't fuss at me. But this year, it got worse than that. During the time I'm supposed to be out there getting petition signatures, I had to ask about a dozen friends of mine to go out and get the signatures for me. I'm not going to feel too good if one of my friends get this mixed up with this pandemic. My idea is, I tried to find another county that made a council member get signatures to run for the council seat. The other ones, what they did was they made them pay a fee, and they were able to run for the council seat. That's the way Fairfield County should be, in all the offices that you try to run for. You shouldn't have to go out and get these signatures and just, it's just a waste of time. Because about half the people we went to this year wouldn't go into the door. And I've been real sick for about three weeks. And finally, got me on some steroids to make my coughing stop, so I'm good and healthy now. So everything, everybody should think about that. Let's go on and maybe pass a resolution or something to stop the signature getting to run for an office.
Any other council member like to be recognized?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bill?
Um, I think it was Friday night or Saturday night, I, I got a really vague question about coronavirus. Okay, and, and the person who called me, it just, it was just so vague. But on Sunday night, they called me with, with more details, and they were sort of hysterical. And they were exposed to someone with the coronavirus. So they were, they were just nervous and afraid. So, and, but in, in order to try to get them some answers, I called Mr. Taylor. I think it was Sunday night sometime, but I knew it was after eight o'clock. And one of the things he did was try to make sure I had the right answers to be able to tell the person what they're going through and that kind of stuff. So I, I want to acknowledge that publicly and thank him for just being there, because this person was very frantic about the, the coronavirus. Another thing we did today is, and, and we had been trying to work on it, but through Senator Fannin's office and, and others, we're going to have testing in Ridgeway on the twenty-third at Giga School. I think it's going to be from nine to one o'clock. And one of the things to do that, they told us, and you really, I'm sure you don't have to do it, but they asked us to try to provide meals and stuff, because the people are going to be out there all day. And that's, that's just a little thing to do for the people that's going to do that. It's going to be done by the Medical University of South Carolina to provide tests. And again, that testing will be a Giga School on the, it's Thursday, July twenty-third, from nine to one o'clock. And, and I want to encourage, and they said they can handle hundreds and hundreds of cars. So if you from anywhere, please come. If you think you need testing, please come to the site to, to get testing. I tell you, this, and, and Ms. Ms. Goins said it earlier. This, this virus is, is no joke. Okay? It's very serious, and a lot of people in various communities, they don't really know what to do. And sometimes people think it's just doomed when you get the virus. So again, let's all of us practice safe habits, wear masks, do social distancing, and, and do wash your hands and that kind of stuff. But again, like I said earlier, I do want to thank Mr. Taylor for just answering my call that late on a Sunday night to try to find, try to get some answers to this lady.
Chairman, I'd like to piggyback on what Mr. Bill just said. I'd just like for the organizer of the testing to really taking into consideration that they're working, there's a working workforce out there that doesn't get off to the afternoon. So nine to one is great, but a lot of those people that's working could not get there, so please consider doing it in the afternoon. They did one from five to eight here about a week or so ago. That was great, and I think they had a great turnout.
Great turnout, yeah.
Please consider that.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert.
And, and, and I really agree with Mr. Gilbert about the timing. But again, when people doing it, he set the time, and I didn't. One of the things we want to do is try to find the, the location, the source, and being able to do all this stuff. And again, we, we got a lot of seniors, a lot of people. Let's, let's try to encourage them to come if we can. And so if we can get some schedules for some other times, let's do that. And I don't know how else we can do that, Mr. Taylor. But if we can find some times where, or some locations, like in the county, I know we just had one from five to eight o'clock. But if we can get those kinds of times, let's, let's try to include them too.
I'm not sure how that works. I guess people sponsor, or like I said, I think that was sponsored by a church, one at the middle school.
Yeah, it was.
So it, 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 it's a lot being put up around the county, around the state, I'd say. But just piggyback on Mr. Doug, Mr. Douglas also. Maybe that's something we can venture into and just check every county and see how we're doing with elections. Because as he said, I've, you go to ten houses, and maybe three of them maybe open the door for you, so.
Mr. Morgan, I briefly discussed that. It does have something to do with the, whether you're a Democrat or Republican, whether you have a party affiliation, I think, or you're nonpartisan. Mr. You, you willing to discuss that just briefly?
Yes, sir, and I, I do believe that it is because of the nonpartisan.
Nonpartisan.
Typically, for example, if you are running as a candidate of a political party, you get certified through the state party itself. But Mr. Douglas will be happy to look into it and see what steps may possibly be taken. Mr. Taylor indicated moments ago, he grabbed me just before the meeting, and that's first we've heard, I've, I've heard of it, but we'll definitely look into it.
Okay, it's like. Awesome. All right, anyone else?
Yes, we would like to ask the organizations or ask Mr. Taylor, if possible, or Mr. Taddy, so give me the information as to who's doing the testing, that we can get one set up over in this area somewhere, and maybe one or two, and some times. If we could look into, please doing that. And just give me the information, whatever I can do to help out, just let me know.
We'd be glad to, certainly.
Yes, ma'am. Anyone else? If not, thank you all, and entertain a motion to adjourn.
I moved to adjourn.
Motion's been made properly second. All those in favor? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, we are now adjourned. Thank you all, be safe.
Thank you all so much.